I called to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, October 14, 2025, meeting to order. Tonight, we have the Reverend Rodney Christian from Union Baptist Church to lead us in the invocation and prayer. Reverend Christian, please come.
Thank you for allowing me to come forth to lead in prayer on this evening. I'm Rodney Christian, pastor of Union Baptist Church, and I greet each and every one by saying good afternoon. And as we come forth with devotions and prayer, it is a pleasure to be a part of this great setting as we do the work that is set before us. I want to bring to your attention, I've been passing for 18 years at Union Baptist, and the experiences that you have with a group, with a body of believers, it's an ongoing blessing to be a part of that, as well as with your work. It is just ongoing. Everything we do has to be renewed, day by day. It's constant, working and facilitating for those that we love and care about. Want to bring to your attention from the book of Psalms, Psalms 24, verse 1 and 2. And it reads on this wise from the King James Version, "The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwells therein. For he has founded it upon the seas and established it upon the floods." That brings to mind that as stewards of the most highest handiwork, our job comes second to none in the work that God has already laid out before us, as he has established it, the foundations where no foundation could have been established. And he also has put in places things that can never be moved, because we serve a mighty good God. And on this evening, as we go to the Lord in prayer, Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for being such a mighty good God, who has caused things to be, and has established your handiwork, and calls us to be stewards of all that you have put before us. We pray, God, that you will continue to keep us as we look to you for the work and the service that we provide for others. Thank you for the opportunity, and we thank you for the privilege to serve this present age. God, we just give you thanks for allowing us to have the oversight of this parcel of real estate we call New Kent County, and all the great work that has been done, that is presently going forth, and the work that we expect in the future. And we pray, God, that you would touch these great administrators, the great men and women. We pray that you would touch the law enforcement and all that make New Kent County special in its own way. We could say, Lord, that this is like the paradise that we are looking for, one day, with the peace, togetherness, and the serenity that you've given us, that you have sheltered us from so much, and you've allowed us to be partakers of the blessings that is so important to your people. We pray, God, that you would touch our minds, touch our hearts, touch those, Lord, that are in high places, as well as touching those that work on the lower level of success. But we pray, God, that as you move upon us, that you would keep our families, keep our homes, and we ask, God, that you just give us the insight that we may do your will. Bless us, Lord, and keep us in this administration. Bless the leaders of our nation. Pray that you will just continue to bless all that are fighting for peace, for we need, Lord, to know that you are able, and that those that are in place have the heart of the people in their bosom, and we thank you for touching our president, we thank you for touching all of those that makes a difference in our society. As we come forth as members, as leaders of New Kent County, not only do we thank you for the great work that's done by our administrators, but we thank you for the neighboring counties that borders this great place, touch us that we may work together collectively, and that together we would be as one. Bless us as we come forth as a great nation, as we look to you with stars and stripes forever. God bless this community, God bless the United States of America. Might we join together, amen, with the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the gliss with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Christian, for those inspiring words. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Miss Stewart?
Here.
Good evening, welcome. As you notice, Mr. Steers is not here this evening, he had a family emergency, so I ask that you keep him and Ms. Steers and their families in your thoughts and prayers. First item this evening is the consent agenda. Has anybody had any comments, concerns, changes? None, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other discussion? If none, Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Next is the citizens' comment period. Anyone signed up? We have one person signed up this evening. I will, when I call your name, I'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Mr. Chris Rizzo.
Good evening, Chris Rizzo. I live on Lost Collie Drive in New Kent, and you have to excuse me this evening for reading from my notes, and I may jumble my words a bit. I just finished 10 weeks of chemo, and I still have a bit of the brain fog, so might stumble a little bit. I sent each of you a letter about support for the sheriff's request for more personnel back in September, so I'm here tonight to ask you to support Sheriff Bailey's request for two part-time civil process and court deputies, and six deputies for traffic. The coverage for the courts and civil process is a constitutional requirement, so if you don't add the positions, it still must be covered by paying overtime and shifting resources from where they're needed elsewhere. That just ends up costing the county more money and diverting important resources. The traffic positions are needed to handle changes in this county. As I mentioned in the letter that I sent you in September, I have 40 years' experience in law enforcement, 20 with Fairfax County Police, and 20 more with Loudon Sheriffs. Among my many assignments, I worked in the traffic units of both those agencies, and I received the Governor's Award for Traffic Safety from Governor Allen in 2007, so I am familiar with traffic safety and the benefits to the county. I can tell you that an effective traffic unit will do three things: it will reduce crashes, and that will save lives; it can handle the large and growing amount of complaints about traffic issues, and that will free up patrol units to concentrate on their primary functions of public safety and responding to calls. And a unit will also be able to respond to accidents, road closures, and other incidents requiring traffic control, so that the sheriff's office will not have to take their limited resources out of service to handle those types of events. In addition, the revenue from citations easily offsets the cost to the county to fund those positions. It did in both the previous traffic units that I worked in, so it's certainly a win-win for the county. I would ask you not to water this down by approving less than what Sheriff Bailey is asking for. Law enforcement used to receive dozens of applications for each new position offered, but things have changed a lot. Now, the number of qualified applicants is much less, and all agencies are competing for the same people. So if you want to retain and attract the type of people we currently have in New Kent Sheriff's Office, you need to be prepared to offer competitive pay and benefits. As you're aware, it does take time to hire and train people for these positions. I would ask that you take the requests with the urgency it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo, for your comments. Next is the residency administrator's report.
Good evening, Ms. Hathaway, members of the board. My name is Mark Harlow, ARA from Ashen Residency, and I'll be giving the report this evening. Hopefully, you guys had an opportunity to look at our maintenance report. Just a quick maintenance report overview, we've completed our third cycle of primary mow, our second cycle of secondary mow. Our crews continue working on drainage, which consists of ditching, pipe maintenance replacement, machining unpaved roads, pothole and asphalt repairs, tree removal, tree pruning, sign repairs, and replacement litter pickup throughout the county. We did receive 122 work orders this past month, we completed 186, so we're working on some of that previous work orders that we had. We also had an additional five emergency after-hour callouts. I did want to touch on a few follow-up concerns from the previous meeting. Ms. Pearson, Clark Road, our crews have been out doing maintenance work on Clark Road, getting it prepared, ready for the real rush to come through. It's looking like it's probably going to be spring of the year before we can seal it, just due to the weather concerns. We really don't want to put a bad product out there and something peel up, so if we have something, a warm winter, and something happens, we can still work and get through that. The other thing was Route 106, that's 211, they're working on trying to extend that ramp on the westbound off-ramp, to that shoulder runoff, to trying to find a way to get that paved. They're working with resources, trying to come up with conclusions, so we can get that done as well. Mr. Moyer, 249, 205 interchange. As of right now, they're not going to let us do away with that left turn. I didn't know if you were aware of that or not, so I just wanted to bring that up, let you know. The other thing we had was Eastview for Mr. Steers, we are out there working, but we can get in touch with him. Ms. Stewart, Holly Fork, the bridge that, where it's closed, we looked into that, that's closed due to the dam safety that the road is on top of. That's a privately owned dam, and that's the reason that it was shut down, because VDOT takes care of the top structure, but the substructure is the dam, and until the property owner can get that repaired, we can't really get that open. One note for that is that that bridge is under the Hampton Roads District, it's not under the Richmond District, just FYI, just so you are aware of that. Traffic studies, we do have two traffic studies ongoing. We have a speed study on Cosby Mill and a safety study on Oliver Road, so those are ongoing, and the traffic study that was done on Holly Fork, as in the report here, says that it's complete, and they're identifying any safety items that we can upgrade. That's all I have. If you have any questions or concerns from me.
Mr. Moyer?
Thank you, and thank you for all you guys do, and thank you for the comment on 249, I understand, just so they can hustle and get it done a little quicker, maybe, you know, but, I know.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate them repaving all of Five Lakes. They didn't quite do all of Five Lakes.
No, it's on schedule for next year. They had to split it this year, so next year it should be coming.
Well, actually, there's a spot on Longview that is a, it goes cul-de-sac, it is, the address is 7124 Longview.
Okay.
And it's a cul-de-sac, there's two houses on it, their addresses are Longview, okay? But that wasn't done.
That wasn't done?
Okay, so I understand the other part.
Right.
Will be done next year, so.
We'll make sure, we got a note of that now, so we can check.
Okay, you got that down?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not all I got, yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
I just want to thank you for all you guys are doing, too. I appreciate you meeting with the homeowner on Cooksmill Road, I think Mr. Frazier met with him on Monday?
Yeah, we met out there.
Friday.
Friday?
Yeah, Friday.
Yeah, okay. I really appreciate the long email, I'm sure it was an in-depth conversation, so I'll circle back with.
Yeah, everything went smooth, and I think we've got a plan to get his concerns taken care of.
Great, great, and I will say, at exit 211, it does seem like on the eastbound coming off of 106, that people are using the other lane. I was there the other day, and I witnessed several of them taking the side road and coming off, so that 106 does not back up as much as it had been. The timing on the lights seems better to me, but I don't go through there as often as my residents do, but I appreciate all you looking at it and reviewing it and keeping up with that, so.
We'll get through it.
Yeah, we will, okay, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Stewart?
Mr. Harlow, thank you, and as everyone said echoing their thanks, I feel like I've had a lot of VDOT-related issues recently, and they have all been addressed very expeditiously, so I appreciate that, and I know the residents do as well, they've been giving me really good feedback about how appreciative they are of the work that y'all are doing. The only thing, just a request to follow up, maybe at the next meeting, would be, and I'm not sure if you were working on this, I didn't see you on the email thread, but the James Drive and the Chickahominy Shores, the ditching, just want to be able to get back to the residents with whatever the plan might be for that, so, but thank you for all the work.
We'll follow up.
Thank you.
I just have two items. I do go through 106 fairly often, each day, and I will say, it's a lot better. One thing, I don't know if you could get your guys out there looking at the timing, on the 106 southbound light, that thing, if it's six cars in there, it only lets four go through. I sit in it every morning, I get caught like two times, so I think if you could just extend that four or five seconds, that would, that would help a lot. I mean, I know timing is everything in there, but it's that thing, people getting backed up.
Get a couple more, sort of flush it out a little bit better.
Yeah, because they're not getting flushed out.
Okay.
And then, when you get a chance, Route 608 River Road, I'm getting a lot of complaints about that, if you've been on there, I know that sand pit down there, I mean, it is, I hadn't been on that road in a while, and I went down there the other day, it is, it is rough.
Rough shape, okay.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is, but I've gotten.
Is it starting to rut up?
Yeah, it's running up and bounces, but if you get a chance, could your guys, or you go out there and take a look at it?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next item is the consideration of the exemption request of Alex Wells on behalf of Seastore Developer LLC for Section 98-1069B3 of the New Kent County Code, Resolution R-33-25. Mr. Silva?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board, and again, for the record, my name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner of the Department of Community Development's Planning Division, again, here this evening to provide an overview of the aforementioned exception request. So again, the request was submitted by Alex Wells on behalf of Seastore Developer LLC. The exception request is specifically to waive the Commerce Corridor overlay district requirements pertaining to signage, both height and sign area, established by Section 98-1069B3 of the County Code. So this specific provision limits the signage for individual uses located in the Commerce Corridor overlay area that are not located in a shopping center, so sort of individual uses, to one freestanding sign that includes no more than 50 feet in sign area and eight feet in height. And specifically, the request is relating to a site plan that the applicant has submitted that is currently under review with the county relating to the proposed construction of a new Wawa automobile fueling station and convenience store located in Lenexa at the intersection of Stage Road and Route 33. So as part of the project scope, the applicant wishes to install a freestanding monument sign, which pursuant to the regulations of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District would be limited to the area and height that I had mentioned a moment ago, but instead, they are asking for an exception from this requirement in order to allow the proposed sign seen on this slide here, which includes a sign area of 84 and a half square feet and is a 25-feet-tall sign. So a little bit of context first, in terms of just general sign regulations. So the EO Economic Opportunity Zoning designation that this parcel falls under typically allows freestanding monument signs with an area of no more than 150 square feet and a height of no more than 25 feet to be installed by right. So in other words, this sign would normally be allowed by right in the EO zoning designation, but again, it's the additional requirements of the Commerce Corridor Overlay Zone that further limit the permissible sign area and height. So a little bit of staff's analysis here, staff did find that the request complied with the findings necessary in order to grant an exception request as articulated in the County Code. Some specifics, staff found that a slightly larger and taller sign was appropriate, given the site context, as site visibility would be improved for customers traveling on Route 33, and allow them a little bit more time to safely prepare to enter the site. And in addition, staff did find that the proposed sign, again, size and height would otherwise be permitted, and indeed, there are other, you know, similar uses, for instance, the adjacent BP here, that have similar signage, both in terms of sign area and height again. So in conclusion, by reconciling the reasons for the exceptions stated by the applicant in their request letter, as well as the staff analysis, staff is recommending approval of this exception request, and likewise, at their September 15 public meeting, the planning commission also voted to recommend, forward a favorable recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors. So that's about the long and short of it, but I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have. And I think we also have some folks from Wawa here tonight, in case there are any questions about the application.
Anybody have any questions? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R-33-25 to approve an exception to Section 98-1069B3 of the New Kent County Code to allow a waiver from additional requirements in the Commerce Corridor Overlay District of Tax Map 36-4D, GPIN number H25-1383-5064.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other discussion? Would like to thank the applicants for coming out tonight and being here in case we did have any questions. So I hear none. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye, motion passes. I forgot to mention, we have two public hearings this evening, but one of them is being pulled, the Resolution R-32-25, the combination of the two, of property for the 249 water extension, this will not be heard this evening. Next presentation this evening is the Rapid Hennett Community College Draft Lease Agreement. Mr. Hathaway? Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, you have before you a proposed lease agreement between New Kent County and Rappahannock Community College, uh, for Rappahannock Community College to occupy four thousand square feet of space in the historic school building. Uh, this is the space that they are currently using for the welding program. Um, previously, uh, we have leased twelve thousand square feet of space to Rappahannock Community College, um, where they had once occupied the front portion of the building. Um, moving forward, they will only occupy the four thousand, which is in the middle portion of the building, and if you're familiar with the school, um, it's the former cafeteria space in the historic school. Uh, this lease is a seven-year lease, uh, with two additional five-year renewable terms. Uh, Rappahannock Community College will be responsible for covering their share of the utilities for that building, uh, what they're currently doing now, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any questions, Mr. Hathaway?
Was it just one, Mr. Chair? Um, how do we determine what their portion of the utilities are?
We, we, we split it, I believe in thirds. Um, we're in the building, Bridging Communities is in the building, and Rappahannock Community College is, so whatever the water and electrical bill is, it's split in thirds.
It's a quarter.
A quarter. Um, you can't. It's, okay. They, they're paying a quarter of it, and I could give you the breakdown, um, of what everyone is paying. I believe Bridging, uh, because they have the largest share of the building, um, they're taking the half, the county is the quarter, and I'm sorry, and RCC is a quarter too. Apologize for that.
And do they pay that regularly? Have we had any payment issues with that, or?
No, no. Uh, they, they do pay regularly. We have not had any payment issues.
I do, so, they're probably, with all those welders and stuff, I'm sure they, is the power bill going up since that building has been turned into a welding lab?
There, there, there has been an increase in, in the power since, uh, the welding lab. Well, there's been a, and I call it a seasonal increase. I mean, it's not normal, but when they are doing the welding, uh, we have noticed spikes in, in the power, but, you know, part of their education time is classroom, part is actual welding, so I, I would call it seasonal.
Any more comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, um, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed lease agreement with Rappahannock Community College for them to occupy approximately four thousand square feet of space within the historic school property for the operation of a welding program.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye, motion pass. Next presentation is twenty-twenty-five Virginia Association of Counties voting credentials. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you are aware, the annual VACO conference, uh, is coming up, uh, November ninth through the eleventh, Sunday through Tuesday. Um, and as always, uh, VACO concludes their annual conference with the annual business meeting. Um, that business meeting, per their charter, uh, requires each member locality to designate, um, a member to vote on behalf of that, that locality. Uh, that can be an elected official, or it can be the chief administrative officer, uh, to, to vote. Um, and I just found out this week, um, where I had been waitlisted, that I do have a room, uh, so I, I will be attending, so I would be happy, uh, to, to vote if, if you would like to nominate me.
Mr. Moyer? I'd be happy to do it this year.
Okay, all right.
Because, you know, it's waiting around a little bit longer than you really have to, so.
Okay.
I, I don't have anything at night, so that would be okay.
Okay.
So I'll do it.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I move to designate John Moyer to vote on behalf of the county during the twenty-twenty-five Annual Business Meeting of the Virginia Association of Counties on Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll the members?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Moyer. All right, uh, next is proposed easement agreement with Tidewater and Big Ben Foundation. Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, we have received a request from the Tidewater and Big Ben Foundation, uh, for a small easement, ten-by-ten easement on property owned by the county, uh, located at the corner of New Kent Highway and Cumberland Road. Uh, this is property that the county recently purchased on, in May, May seventh of this year. Uh, the easement would be a ten-by-ten easement. The purpose of the easement is for the, um, location of directional signage to the Cumberland Estates property. In your meeting packet, um, you'll see the draft easement, uh, that's been prepared by staff and reviewed by the Tidewater Big Ben Foundation. They are in agreement with the terms of that easement. Um, that easement also includes a map and rendering of the proposed sign.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Uh, any questions? I, I have one, uh, is that just a typo on number six, or, that's after the relocation or removal on the draft agreement, then six is just blank?
Yes.
Something's supposed to be?
That, that is a typo. Um, six should be removed.
Okay, so it's, will only be seven?
That's correct.
Seven conditions.
Okay, seven conditions, okay. All right, no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county administrator to advertise a public hearing on the proposed easement agreement with Tidewater and Big Ben Foundation for the November twelfth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Watkins, poll the members?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Okay.
Our last presentation this evening, uh, New Kent County Public Schools Carry Forward and Grant Fund App, Appropriations, our finance director, Mr. Lawrence. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, you have two separate motions in one presentation this evening, um, from our friends at the school board, uh, for carry-forward grants and new grants received in FY twenty-five. Um, the carry-forward grants, um, were part of a, a different accounting treatment for some direct grant revenue that we received in FY twenty-four that was used in FY twenty-five, so it was deferred in last year's end-of-year processes and then recognized in FY twenty-five. Um, the review and recognition, uh, just kind of moved it back a little bit, so that's why it's coming to you a little later in the game. Um, the three programs, um, in question, um, again, all those revenues were received, cash was received in FY twenty-four, revenue was recognized in, in FY twenty-five. We just need to, uh, appropriate those funds to, to keep everyone's, uh, budgets in line. Um, and then the second appropriation of additional grants were new grants received in, um, FY twenty-five. The Title I is, um, a traditional grant we always get, uh, we just received a little bit more funding, um, for that in FY twenty-five. Um, the school-based mental health, um, had a change in how the reimbursement structure was done from a, uh, fiscal year, uh, to a calendar year grant, so the draws were a little bit different, which allowed us to receive a little more, uh, revenue than expected. And then the, uh, school safety grant is another new grant that I believe the schools received at the end of the fiscal year, um, and they were kind of looking to see if it was going to be another one of those situations of deferred or recognized, and ended up being recognized. Um, so all of the, the revenues that are requested being appropriated right now, again, have been received. Uh, this is just a budget action to kind of close the books on FY twenty-five.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments? Are you, so you said two motions, but it's all in one? That's, that's happy, that's the way it's prepared, it's okay?
That's fine. It's a pleasure of the board to approve both of them, that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the appropriation of New Kent County Public Schools' FY twenty-five carry, carry-forward funds totaling eight-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand, twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents. I further move to authorize the appropriations of additional grant funds received by New Kent County Public Schools in FY twenty-five totaling a hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and one cent.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Uh, our public hearing tonight is FY twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, Budget Amendment to Carry Forward FY twenty-five Budget Appropriations, Resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty-five. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, you have before you Resolution R dash thirty-two dash twenty-five.
Thirty-one dash thirty-five.
Excuse me, you have before you Resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty-five. This is a resolution to carry forward, uh, FY twenty-five year-end funds in the amount of fifty-three million, nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Um, we do this every year, and last year I got the question a couple of times, so what is the county doing with this big surplus? So I, I, I want to be clear, uh, that this figure does not represent a surplus in revenues from last year. This is solely a carry-forward of FY fif, FY twenty-five funds that mainly consist of programs, services, and already-approved capital projects. These are funds that have already been appropriated, that just did not end, um, at the end of the fiscal year, and therefore carried forward into this current fiscal year, with the majority of that amount being ongoing capital projects. In your resolution, there is a summary breakdown of the fifty-three million dollars, um, and also in your meeting packet, there's even a more detailed explanation, um, breaking it even further down by a line item of what involves the fifty-three million, nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents. This time I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll, I'll open a public hearing first. Anyone signed up? No one signed up, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from board members to Mr. Hathaway?
I have, Mr. Hathaway, this is basically, uh, paying stuff on a calendar year versus a fiscal year. We, we have a program that's a full calendar year, but because our fiscal year is different than our calendar year, that's why we're, we're still paying.
Uh, basically, a lot of these are, uh, capital projects that were funded in FY twenty-five, but they weren't completed in FY twenty-five.
Oh, okay, right.
Uh, so therefore we had current year expenditures on those capital projects.
So it's FY twenty-six.
So we're bringing those funds forward. Also included in here are a lot of grants that don't operate on the same fiscal year schedule that, that we do, so we have to carry them forward to the present fiscal year.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I entertain a motion?
See, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty-five, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget by approving supplemental carry-forward appropriations in the amount of fifty-three million, nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye, motion passes. That concludes the public hearings this evening. Next, the elected officials report, so I'll start with you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have, um, quite a few things, so apologize for the length of this. First is tomorrow, the fifteenth, at six p.m. at Station Three, Mr. Reimer and I are having, um, some time for the community to come in and talk with us if they have any concerns. Um, tomorrow is also the last day, um, for the New Kent Veterans are planning their inaugural Armed Forces Ball. Tomorrow's the last day to buy tickets for that, if anyone is interested. Uh, we also, at the last, at our work session, I mentioned Plan RVA is taking input on a couple of regional plans, and the input periods for the Regional Air Quality Plan and the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy are both open right now. And, Mr. Hathaway, I'll send you the links to those, so if anybody wants to participate in that public input, they can. Um, this weekend on Saturday is also the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority, so I know, um, our Clean County Committee will be out there participating in the event, and it is, I think, going to be a very good time and all zero waste. Uh, and probably most importantly today, wanted to make sure, I think this is our last meeting before Election Day without our work session included, wanted to make sure the Eltham residents knew their voting precinct. They got a card, but as I've been door knocking, I've realized a lot of people don't check their mail and don't pay attention. Um, their voting precinct is going to be at St. Luke Baptist Church this year at seventy-nine oh-one Plum Point Road, um, and when I was door knocking, a lot of them were excited that they did not have to leave the neighborhood to go vote, um, so just want to make sure everyone was aware of that. Uh, and then just, you know, thank you to our Sheriff's Department and General Services Departments. The past few weeks I've had a lot of random requests and everyone has been very helpful, and I appreciate the assistance. That's all.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes, um, couple of things coming up this week. The Fall Festival is Friday, October seventeenth, at Pinefort Park, at, from five to eight. That's always a really nice community event, um, lots of people go out, lots of children, um, hopefully the weather's great. Uh, also this week, on the eighteenth, the Cumberland Community Center Festival is, um, taking place. Um, and Ms. Stewart already mentioned the CBWMA Recycling Fair on, um, Saturday also, and, um, the Clean County Recycling Event is the next Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from nine to one, here in the parking lot at the County Administration Building and Courthouse. And, um, on November fifteenth, there's also an NAACP Community Fall Festival at the Cumberland Community Center. That's all I have.
Mr. Moyer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I have a couple of things. The District Two, um, basically Sidewalk Committee meeting I call Town Hall will be October twenty-first, uh, at nine o'clock in the morning, and it will be at Station Number Six this time. So, uh, come out and see the station, come out and ask questions, and, uh, give you some views and your solutions. Also, uh, the Chickahomie Triad Meeting is ten a.m., uh, tomorrow on the fourth floor of Rosie's. Uh, good time, uh, will be had by all, all kind of health screening, um, and health initiatives will be available there. And I just want to mention, Mr. Rizzo's not here anymore, but, uh, I just want to make sure he knows we heard him about the sheriff, and we'll see what funds are coming in to make sure we can do something about that.
Uh, I would just like to, uh, inform everybody that October seventeenth, there will be a Fall Festival at Pinefort Park. Uh, I think that'll be finished from five to eight, uh, open to all the public, uh, be kids there, all kinds of events and games, and, uh, it is always a great time, great turnout, and I'd really like to thank the Parks and Rec Department, highly naggy for putting that on, organizing it. Uh, along with the voting, I just would like to remind everyone that you can early vote. The Health and Human Service Building is open. Mr. Hathaway, could you, the time, the time to vote is?
Eight to four-thirty, yes.
Eight to four-thirty, thank you, so. I encourage everyone to get out and vote early, and that's all I have. Mr. Hathaway, staff reports?
Um, I only have a couple of.
I only have a couple of.
I only have a couple of items. One, I just want to remind everyone that our final fall market, farmer's market of the year will take place October 25th from 9:00 to 12:00. And a couple of board members have shared with me that there may be a conflict with the November work session date. Wanted to know if you wanted to look at rescheduling that now.
What's the date supposed to be?
November, yeah.
Yes.
Are we going to need a meeting?
I, I do know that the Housing Committee is planning to provide their report to you at that November meeting, and I'm not sure, I'm sure there'll be other agenda items as, as well.
So our meeting is pushed back on the 12th, on Wednesday, right, our regular board meeting?
Yes.
So what dates?
That's right.
The 24th, maybe? I don't.
The 24th would be okay with me, even though that's that week, 24th is fine.
Okay.
I, I'll make it, I'll make it work. Y'all have done enough for me this year. All right, I'll need a motion from our board to change the.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to move the November 25th work session to Monday, November 24th.
At 9:00 a.m. here?
At 9:00 a.m.
Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Any other business from board members, staff? Appointments delegated by district? Not delegated by district? Regional boards or commissions? All right. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. And the next work, next work session will be held at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, October 28th, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. Again, thanks, everyone, for coming out this evening and watching on TV. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.